Well, good morning. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any citizens to be heard that has wanted to speak that's not on the agenda? Did we get any calls in or anything?
We did not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll move on to approval of the payments, bills and vouchers.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mocho, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Approve the bills. So any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next thing, approval of the minutes from December the 27th.
Move approval.
Second.
Approval by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Krabunov. Any discussion on them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next thing, we go to the annual treatment court update from Judge Kautzman, Judge Merkins. Uh, let's see.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And so, well, Don is passing out some information for all of you. I just wanted to introduce myself. I don't know if I've had the opportunity to be here in front of the full board. My name is Tammy Merkins. I'm one of the judges here in Clay County, obviously. And I just recently took over as the treatment court judge for Judge Lawson when she transferred to Becker County. And so, I just want to say thank you for having us here today to talk about our treatment courts. And I will turn it over to Don at this point. We also have Janelle Chaney and Paige McDowell from probation. Obviously, Brian Milton is here. And so, if you have any questions as we're going through everything, we'd be happy to answer them as well. But Don has some information as to kind of where we're at in our current statistics.
Why, Don?
I just want to pause and say that you're Judge Kautzman in the packet. Yeah, unofficially.
Be Don hit your-
You'd be happy to have him.
Hit your button too on your mic.
Thanks, Brian. Yeah, so, in the last year, we've had actually probably more changes at one time than in any other time in the history of our program. Over the course of about two months, we had five new team members come on our team, which was quite a lot of change all at once. But I just want to say that we were very lucky to have Judge Merkins take over the program because she, when she was the county attorney in Becker County, she was on our team there as the prosecutor. So she came in and was already very familiar with treatment courts and the philosophy and our policies and procedures. So she was really able to hit the ground running and lead our team through this transition very successfully. I did distribute some numbers for you all. You can look at our statistics and our budget information. You can see currently we've got 26 participants total, which is about average for the program. And we've got, we've had now 117 total graduates in the drug court. Of those, 116 were employed when they graduated and the other was a full-time student. And 56 had obtained their driver's licenses while they were in the program and the others already had their licenses. All who had child support payments were current on those payments when they graduated. All had been sober for at least a year at the time they graduated and completed a community service project of a minimum of 50 hours and they had paid off all their court fines and fees. And we have only had 23 graduates who have re-offended over the 15 years of our program, which I think that's a very impressive statistic when you're talking, you know, 117 graduates, only 23 re-offended. If you add in the graduates from our veterans court, we've had seven graduates there and none have re-offended. So that's a success rate basically of 81% when only 19% have re-offended.
If they re-offend, can they go through the program again or?
They can be. They can be screened, yep. If they re-offend, yes.
Okay.
That hasn't come up. We haven't had anybody do that yet, but it is, they are eligible. And then you could see I've included just some demographic data on the graduates, breaking them down by gender and race. And the budget information, our expenses are basically unchanged from last year. The only thing, the only modification I've made, I've allocated some funding for trainings and for the state conference because with all our new team members, I'd like to get them to some trainings that the state offers, get them, you know, a little more background on treatment courts, which I think will be helpful. And the funding, the numbers on here are the funding that we got over the last year. And so, I anticipate it'll be the same in 2023 from the same sources. So some of these, we haven't actually received these yet in 2023, but that's what I'm going to be asking for from the various counties and offices. And I did want to add too, one other update. Judge Rosenfeld is very interested in starting a DUI court in Clay County. And next week, we are going to be meeting with justice partners to begin discussions about that. And I think that support for that has grown in recent years amongst our justice partners. So Judge Rosenfeld seems very interested and pretty determined to make that happen. So I think we are eventually going to get a DUI court to add another treatment court here in Clay County, which will be, I think, a good thing. Other than that, I guess, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions. I did want to share just one really brief story. We had a graduation recently in Becker County. And one of the people who attended it was the very first graduate of the Clay Becker Drug Court. He graduated back in 2009 and he came to this graduation just because he wanted to, you know, see everybody and say hi. And he updated us and he had gone to college and gotten his degree. He had a job. He was still sober. He looked great. He was doing great. And he spoke to the team after the graduation and said that, you know, I am really happy to see that this program is still around and still helping people. And, you know, the reason we are still around and still helping people is because of the support we get from you. We could not do this without all of you and it's really appreciated and you're making a difference in our community. So thank you for that.
Well, thank you for being there and welcome aboard, Judge Merkin.
Thank you. And I would just like to reiterate what Don said about we really do appreciate the support from the board and from Clay County in general for all of our treatment courts and potentially for adding on another treatment court because they are, I think, vital to rehabilitation and to making the community safer. And so, I am very dedicated to this, as Don said. This is something that I did when I was at the county attorney's office. And I think that they're fantastic courts and we really appreciate everything that you're also doing to support that. I would continue to encourage you. I know I've seen some of you at graduations and things like that. I would encourage you to continue to come. They're always wonderful to see. You're always welcome to come during any of our treatment court sessions, but those graduations are something really special. So thank you.
As I've attended many of the graduations and they are, some are tear trickers, I tell you. They're really, I mean, it's good to hear their reports and stuff like that. Let me know when the next one is.
Yes, looking at the funding, I see there's Clay County forfeiture funding. Is that from the sheriff, the total of the sheriff's department and the Morehead Police?
Yes, yep, the sheriff and the police and the county attorney.
And the county attorney. Well, during my time with Morehead PD, we were always supporter of this court. Right now, one of the primary emphasis that we're trying to put on the public safety views of the AMC is looking at community treatment. We need to have resources within the community for parole and probation to work. And I'm going to steal Ms. Chaney's thunder here. These things have to be available. And when you have a proven process like we have in our drug court and a process in the veterans court that's proving itself right now, I mean, you guys have done a great job. And funding is an issue and it's something we need to be aware of. It needs to be part of our approach. And we've got to be mindful that we have to have resources within our community for people to be on the outside and get out of, deal with their criminal conduct in a manner that doesn't just cycle them back through the Department of Corrections time and time again. And you have got a product here that has done that. And I want, we're going to continue to support it and I hope it expands. Specialized courts are really a way to do this, to hold people accountable without putting them behind bars where they get bitter and a lot of times come out worse than they went in. And I think I can speak to that from experience. I did it for 40 years and I watched people come in and not get better. They go into your program, they do. So thank you very much for what you do and please let us know what support you need.
Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Good morning. I have a couple of questions and I want to, I want to start with the 117 graduates. And what does it, what does it take for one of those people to be able to enter into the drug court system?
Well, they have, we have an eligibility criteria. So to get in, they have to either have drug charges or felony charges of another kind where drug use or drug addiction was the motivating factor behind the criminal activity. And so, if they meet that criteria and they are a resident of either Clay or Becker County, they can be screened by a team.
Would you, would you think it would be fair to say that probably to get to the extent where they would need to have this type of interaction, that maybe they've probably had multiple cases to be able to get to that? I see Brian shaking his head yes as well. You know, and so that goes, to me, that even expresses more of the success of the program. You know, because if these 117 who have graduated and we have an 80% success rate with not coming back, before they did it, they were coming back multiple times. So that's, you can just really see the significance of, to me, how that, how that program has worked and been successful. I certainly supported it in 2009. I encouraged, at the time, Judge Winkus, I believe, was her name back then. But to move forward with that and it's really good things. The only thing that's unfortunate for me is your graduation ceremonies always conflict with my schedule because I'm, that's the one day of the month where I'm usually out of town on other meetings, so. But otherwise, I'd be glad to attend. And I know Frank talks about it all the time and he reports back to us. Congratulations on your successes. And like Commissioner Ebinger said, I think we're more than willing to continue helping keep those programs going.
Okay. Anybody else? Well, thank you, Judge Merkin, for being here and continue on the good program.
Thank you very much.
That will move on to Corey Banks. He requests to hire a full-time Scale House attendant and accountant for the new Resource Recovery Center.
Good morning and thank you.
Morning, Corey.
I'm here this morning to request the hire of a new Scale House attendant. With the opening of the new Resource Recovery Center, we will be streamlining the solid waste accounting and scale operation into one location. On this position, I'll be responsible for creating all incoming tickets as well as directing customers to where to bring their items. Feel it's a very important position out at the new transfer station. It's going to be new to everybody and they need to know where to go when they get there. So this position will also do some coding for bills that will be sent to me for payment approval. And this position was also included in the 2023 budget. So the paying for it has already been approved. We just need to hire. And the person we're looking at hiring is a variable hour position. She's already been working for us, so she's partially trained. We just want to get her on board before we open to make sure that everything's a go. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Any questions on that?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Ebinger to approve the hiring. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It'll be all set to go next month, right?
It should be.
Okay. You need backfill or anything on that or is that gonna, it'll be okay? Very good. Okay, we'll go over through the final, excuse me, approval of the commission appointments or committee appointments. You should got a new copy of the updates. Is there any changes in any of them that you want to discuss? Have you looked over your committees?
Mr. Chair, if I could, at the last meeting last week, there's a couple of different questions that the commission had. I just wanted to follow through with a couple of those. I did talk with Kirk Cannon, a veteran service officer. There was a question whether or not the Veteran Service Advisory Committee, which hadn't been meeting, was a state statute requirement. Mr. Cannon indicated that it was not and so that he would be fine with that, but certainly appreciates the support that he receives from beyond the yellow ribbon and is hopeful that those, those would continue. The CAP LP Community Action Position that currently is under Commissioner Krabunov is a, is an at-large position, just verified with them. I think they've asked, they've reached out to Commissioner Krabunov about, Commissioner Krabunov about his interest there, but just wanted to clarify that. We had reached out to Morehead Planning Committee. We do have one designee as a part of their, their planning. It doesn't address an alternate, but as a board, you have the ability to appoint whoever is going to be participating on that. So if we wanted to have an alternate with that, I think that would be a good plan to move forward with. We had some discussions about the Intergovernmental Committee. If you recall, this past year, along with the name change, our Joint Powers Committee changed, changed the number of meetings that we are going to be having. And so, we're, starting this year, we meet January, March, May, potentially July, September and November. And so, we're not meeting nine months. We're just meeting six months out of the year. And so, that, some of those meetings, I think, do conflict with, with Commissioner Krabunov's Board of Directors meeting. And so, I don't know what the board's wishes would be there. And then finally, the, I did talk with Shannon Foel. When she came and presented to the board, she talked about the possibility of having commissioners as a part of their public policy group. Again, the goal of that group, that committee would be to establish statewide initiatives and policy development on how to best deal with, deal with issues, workforce in Minnesota. So with that, I'd yield for any questions.
I've got a question on the Clay County Substance Abuse Committee. I know we discussed that last week and I didn't make a note of that. Was that, that's still going to be going?
So, so there are two different areas to that. Your substance use programming is the programming portion of it. And so, as they're, they're expanding in their facility, they'll now be able to offer different services that they're currently offering. And so, you would be the liaison to, to that group.
Okay, but I'm, that's not undermined though, is it?
It was supposed to be. Substance Use Programming Committee, yes. Right above the T corridor Joint Powers.
Towards the bottom of your list.
I think he's thinking about the Clay County Substance-
Yes, okay.
There's two separate substance-related committees. I think Commissioner Gross might be referring to the discussion we had regarding the Clay County Substance Abuse Committee, which Commissioner Ebinger and Commissioner Krabunov are currently appointed to. I believe there was some scheduling changes that appears that the conflict might have been-
The EDC has changed from, I believe it was the third Thursday to the first. So that's eliminated the conflict.
Sorry. Yep, that was-
So I think that's important in an effort to have this board broadly represented on substance use issues to make sure we have most of us represented in some capacity, which we are.
Then, Mr. Ebinger, Minnesota and North Dakota Mutual Aid for Law Enforcement, was that supposed to be taken off?
Mr. Chair, I think there was, originally that request was made and I think there was an ongoing discussion based on how new the changes of mutual aid were, that it would be beneficial to at least keep it on for, for right now.
Okay. I guess I got some crossed off that I didn't know whether it should be taken off, like Commissioner Campbell, your correctional operation dispatch committee alternate?
That, that one is, that one was changed to-
Detox or something?
Red Regional Dispatch Board of Authority.
Okay.
We can, we could, I believe, unless somebody has, has other information, the Correctional Operation Dispatch Committee, which I'm an alternate on, I don't think that's met since the new correctional facility was completed, has it? I mean, that's something we could probably remove.
Yeah, that's, that's been, that's gone into other committees, that one, so that-
Mr. Chair, I know we had had some discussion last week on the Morehead City Planning and hearing the new information that our administrators brought forward. Commissioner Krabunov is currently the Morehead City Planning Commission Representative and I think it would be appropriate to add an alternate from this board. Certainly having, you know, I know Commissioner Ebinger had vocalized some interest in, in having the ability to attend those. I think that would be relevant.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
So Commissioner Ebinger is the alternate?
The Morehead City Planning.
Which certainly worked for me. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, just to clarify, how the city operates, their planning commission, as are we have our designees and our alternates on a lot of committees that are able to participate. At this one, there would only be a request to have, have one, so that it would just be in the event that Commissioner Krabunov wouldn't be able to make it.
Yeah, my intent is to make, make it when I can, but certainly Commissioner Ebinger and I can mark that up.
Sounds great.
But also, yes, that alternate would not be participating. It would be similar to how we operate our MetroCog appointments, for instance. An alternate is, is welcome to attend those and be up to date on the conversation.
Yeah, that would be one of those positions where, you know, you're sitting there and you're staying advised on issues. There's nothing wrong. I think that's very appropriate to do that. It's just that there is no voting opportunity unless Paul would not be there.
And I see that restorative justice, we took that off Commissioner Ebinger, but we didn't take it off Krabunov. Is that, that committee's gone, isn't it?
Yeah, I spoke with County Attorney Milton and he indicated that-
We'd have to take it off Commissioner Krabunov also.
I have a question on that. I know we had some roundtable discussions in the community this last year regarding restorative justice. Would that be appropriate to continue that since we just had those conversations?
I think the roundtable piece was mainly, the effort in regard to that had to do with getting the restorative justice into the schools and really seeing if that effort, if we're going to put our effort behind that, was there an interest in there? And I think we found from those roundtables, there was a strong interest of that. Beyond that, we don't have that same, we have that, that two-year piece through the CARES or ARPA, but we don't have that same grant funding that we used to have for restorative justice anyway. And so, I think once that's done, we'll either have to figure out if we're going to budget and do something else or we probably won't have that same restorative justice effort we've had in the past.
So those conversations would happen within your department rather than have a sounding board with commissioners on there?
I think that's, I mean, not that I don't mind, you know, having input and everything else, but it really just comes down to, do we have any money to put for, we, for, you know, four or five years, we had a grant funding for that, which that grant funding has gone away. And then we looked to the ARPA side of things to have that two-year piece, which I think is very effective. But I think the question will become, do we have funding and would we want to put, you know, something into the budget undermined to continue that? And/or, I mean, one of the hopes is that after the two-year effort, that potentially the schools will take that on and look to fund that because that grant piece just isn't there anymore.
Just, it's such important work and given the, the participation with entire community partners, I just don't want that work to be forgotten about because we're not necessarily, not that it, having a committee on a portfolio makes it a priority. I just don't want it to get forgotten about.
Yeah, I mean, and fully up to you, if that committee wants to remain, you want to have somebody there and ultimately reaching out to me to find out what's happening. I mean, obviously, at the two-year mark, we're going to have to look at and determine, is there, is there something or what are we going to do in regard to that? Because I agree exactly what you're saying, Commissioner, that it is such an important effort and then just comes down to budgeting and do we have that, that money behind it? And/or, any other grant funding that's out there. We're always looking to see if there's any new grant funding, but at least right now, there's not for that restorative justice side of things. So I, it's really up to the commission and if somebody wants to stand there and ultimately reach out to me. But currently, we're not meeting in any other capacity under restorative justice, other than the one individual who's in the schools currently.
So we need a committee or we don't need a committee? Is that?
Well, I'm, I'm not the committee representatives, but I also-
Okay, we got, oh, there, of course, he hasn't attended the meeting.
It was, was in my portfolio and after a discussion with Mr. Milton, I, you know, I, the lane I think is, and I think this is important work. I've dealt with it before I came, came to this community. But if, if it's handled by staff and the elected official who runs it, staff says, at this point, there's not a function for us there, I am going to have to take, take them at his word that you let the, you've got one employee right now that's being paid for with a grant and I don't think we need to crowd in there expecting more than what they've got and let the person who's running it, run it. If this is something where we're adding additional funding for personnel and trying to expand the program, maybe we'd have a role there, but I don't see one right now.
Okay. I want to just go back to the Morehead City Planning Commission. We appointed Paul as the alternate. Who is the primary?
He's primary and alternate.
Well, you're alternate, but it's not on your, it's not on your portfolio, is it?
Not yet, no.
No, that, Mr. Chair, that was one of the items that you asked me to look into.
Okay.
So we would be adding that.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Okay, Paul, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm going to come back to the Intergovernmental Group. I really feel like I'm going to have a conflict every time. So if someone else wants that-
Commissioner, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Krabunov, the Intergovernmental Retreat is actually the first Thursday of every month. The, your, your, your Board of Directors Quarterly Meeting is the third Thursday and I believe the substance meeting is the third Thursday, correct?
I think the substance is first Thursday.
First Thursday? Okay.
And then the other thing I ran into, you know, just last Thursday, was the Children's Mental Health starts right at 8:30.
All right. So you had to, you had to leave the Intergovernmental Retreat to get to-
Early.
Yeah.
And I mean, so, I mean, it's up to you all. I don't know how, if that bothers you or not, but I would be leaving perhaps 10 minutes early.
Yeah, and there's, there's often times where that, that's, by the time we get to that part of the agenda, it's kind of-
As long as everybody's okay with that, then I'll continue on.
Wouldn't be a problem at all.
I think when I served on, that there was some teachers that had to be at school by eight.
Right.
So oftentimes, that meeting is 50 minutes long.
Okay, okay. Leave it alone.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other changes?
I want to bring up the, so on my list here, it shows the Lakes Country Service Cooperative. That's something that I serve on. I wonder if we could maybe just shorten that to say Lakes Country Service Co-op and then have a, maybe a hyphen there and behind it show the word elected. That is something that, that I get elected to by the members of the co-op. That is something that, that I get elected to by the members of the co-op, but I do represent Clay County. There's no, there's no pay, there's no per diem or mileage paid for by the county. But I just think that should be clarified, that that's kind of a unique one where it's an elected position by a different body. But it's, but it's, but I still, I still like it as a committee because I do represent Clay County. So, but I just think we should probably have that noted. That's something that we just can't switch back and forth.
Sure.
We can in other committees, so.
Very good.
And then I'd like to maybe talk a little bit about this chamber one. I think that's, that's one that's important, and I think there's been an interest expressed by a lot of people, and I'm certainly one of them. I know that in the past, you know, I have spoken before, the Public Affairs Committee, I've worked together with the Public Affairs Committee on several things. So I, you know, I think my, my experience there helps, and I also think that my 40-plus years in my other career being involved with business and dealing with tax issues as far as what's important to Minnesota businesses, I think I can, I have some knowledge there that would be beneficial. So I, you know, I know this is a new one, and I know they're looking for two people, and I, so I think that component of it is good. But yet, at the same point in time, I, I don't think we can ignore the fact that agriculture is an important part of chamber activities. It brings an awful lot. So I, so I, I would think that if we're going to do something, we should have somebody who might have, can represent some of the business portion as well, as well as the, you know, when we're dealing with, working with the state legislature on issues, you can't ignore ag either and the importance of it. So I, somebody with an ag background, I think, would, would be helpful on this because I, in, in all honesty, I think most of the, most of the people who would probably serve on, on those committees through the chamber are more business oriented as opposed to, let's say, ag-related, with the exception of your financial institutions have members on there, and they're very familiar with, with issues important to the ag industry, you know. So I, so I don't know, I, you know, I, you know, I don't know if that's something that Commissioner Mojo would have interest on or what have you, but I, I'm just throwing that out there from, from an experience standpoint and, and what I think should be there. This isn't, this is a lot more than just being about Chamber Day in St. Paul. This is about looking at issues important. I remember in my previous role in my other job, I, I was really involved with, with us bringing, bringing the business to Moorhead. And there was an awful lot that went into that in terms of researching and seeing what, you know, why, why are we better off going to Moorhead than we might be to go open another store in Fargo or something like that? So the, you know, so there's an awful lot that goes into that from a business standpoint. And I know Paul's also had some experience with that in his work as a Realtor, but I, I just think that, I, I want to throw that out there and you can see who else has interest in it, but I, I have a strong interest in wanting to continue to work with the chamber.
If I can interject something, just, I have been working with Shannon and Joe. There are a lot of mutual meetings between the chamber and the EDC. Went to St. Paul on, on Chamber Day with the, the 15 elected officials and local leaders that were part of it last year. I think there's a, a real nexus between the EDC and the chamber right now. And for the last two years since I've been on, I've worked with it. I think we've been successful, and I was part of that. And I, I expressed the concerns of this committee to EDC that the Minnesota side needed to be represented. We needed views. Worked with downtown Moorhead and, and the city of Moorhead in addition to trying to keep the needs of our rural communities in, in mind. So I mean, I'm, I've been involved in it since I've come to the commission, and that's the sort, that's the point where I'm interested in it.
Mr. Chair. Part of my concern over the past few years is that I don't feel like Clay County has had a loud enough presence or voice in regards to economic development components, not only with our partners within the metro, but in St. Paul as well. I think that, I agree, Dave, you've been a fantastic voice and presence, and we're seeing some really great changes with the EDC and the chamber in regards to making sure that Clay County is represented in their newsletter, they're represented in their legislative priorities and the initiatives that we're doing on the Minnesota side. And I think because of that, it makes sense to broaden the scope as much as possible with our presence. And, and that's a lot of what I, as I evaluate our committees, making sure that we're trying to broaden the scope of the really large issues at hand, substance use, mental health, those types of issues. But because all of us in little nuggets have economic development initiatives, if you look at everyone's committees, making sure that everyone has a voice at the table to address those issues. Commissioner Ebinger and Gross are on the Business Subsidy Committee, which is not technically meeting right now, but I think based on the conversations that we're having with the economic development partners, we need to start championing, championing that committee and the work and the.
That's one that I'm on with.
I think I said Commissioner Campbell. I'm sorry, Commissioner Campbell and Ebinger, but those types of pieces and to make sure that, I think Commissioner Krabnoff and Commissioner Ebinger are on the EDC piece and talking about how do we broaden the scope and broaden the voice? And I, I agree. I think we've all worked with Shannon at the chamber over the last year because they're finally opening up and really having more of a presence on the Minnesota side and in St. Paul. And I don't think appointing, if I were to be appointed to this, which I would be interested in, I don't think that, that mutes the voice of what the EDC is doing. I think that only bolsters our position when we go to St. Paul to lobby for priorities because we can work off each other. It's a way to make sure that we're all involved with such an important initiative.
Just for clarification, the 20th, and I, I'm going to have to leave the intergovernmental retreat a couple, a couple hours early, but there's a joint meeting between the EDC Board of Directors and the Chamber Board of Directors at the EDC building. I believe that's open to the public, but are these things, if we have multiple commissioners on these two boards, we need to be mindful of advertising?
Well, as a clarification, this is not an appointment to the Chamber Board of Directors.
No.
This is an appointment to the, the Working Group for Legislative Priorities.
Okay, okay.
Different, yeah.
Very good.
But yes, if it were to be, if there was a quorum, which it's not going to be because this is different, we'd advertise.
And that, and I, I think that goes precisely to what Commissioner Mojo was saying, is that, is that we've got two strong voices on the EDC board that, that are dealing with, with economic development issues. And the economic development issues, when you look at the chamber, what is the chamber's focus? The chamber's focus is on business, and they're, they want to know, you know, they're, they're going to, they want to make sure that there can be success for businesses in Moorhead, Minnesota, and Clay County. And so, so it's, it's what legislative priorities can be to deal with those types of issues. That's, that's where the chamber's focused. The EDC's focus goes beyond, beyond just business. They're, they, they get into an awful lot of other things in terms of why you should promote moving to this metropolitan area. And so it's a little bit beyond, you know, and the, the business subsidy that was talked about, that's something that Grant Whelan and I, back many years ago, we, we were the ones that asked to have that put in place and deal with. And it, and that was kind of at the same point in time where we were dealing with what is now the, the credits for first-time home builders.
Oh.
You know, that.
Exhabitation program.
Exhabitation program. That all, that all started kind of at the same point in time back, back in that, that area, so. You know, and I, you know, and I think even, you know, something that hasn't been talked about is we also have members who are on the West Central Initiative. West Central Initiative still also has some involvement with economic development. And so we, we have, everybody's got, you know, I think the idea is everybody can be working on, on some sort of a, part of this whole economic development process, but again, I just want to emphasize it's, it's more than just, you know, and I know, I know Dave and, and Commissioner Ebinger and Commissioner Kaylee went to the Hill for the Chamber and Moorhead days, and that's greatly appreciated. There's a lot more to it than, than just that, and, and I. It's not very often we have a lot of commissioners who won't want the same job.
I, I think that's a testament to how important the work is.
Right.
And I think that's a testament to why it needs to be the broadest scope possible.
Just to give it clear, are you trying, is this a new committee we're forming?
It's new representation that's been requested by the chamber.
Okay. That's not in anybody's.
No.
Portfolio right now?
Not yet, no.
Okay. And how many people have, you're interested in this? Well, you got two people interested.
Well, there's.
Three.
There's three interested.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll add in, so as we talk about this, I, I totally see the broader piece. And I think we'll be mindful, I would be supportive, I guess, right now with the conversation that's just occurred. Commissioner Mojo speaking to a broader group, I, I do think that with being mindful and, and our communications here together of what's going on, on if it would be Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo just keeping well informed what's happening as the, on the, give me the name of what the chamber position would be, if you will, please.
It would be their Public Policy Committee.
Okay, Public Policy, okay. And they've been having public policy committees for long, long, long.
Used to be known as Public Affairs.
Right, right, right. Okay, and I've attended a few of those, again, through the HBA. But I would, I would support those two and then just making sure that we're kept in the, in lockstep with what's going on there and, and to broaden the scope through the EDC, certainly with Commissioner Ebinger being on the Executive Committee, in, in fact, and, and being on the, the board there. I think that would be, in my view, would be the greatest scope we can take with our board.
That's feeling of the majority of the commission. I have no problem with that.
I think part of moving forward as we discuss legislative priorities, and in the last couple of years, we've done a better job about putting down on paper what our legislative priorities are for Clay County, but making sure that through the Executive Board of the EDC and Public Policy Committees that we are putting that all together so that we have a solid voice for Clay County, a solid voice for the region. Like I said, it only bolsters the efforts that we're trying to, to be more present at in St. Paul.
I, I think it's, I agree with that. I think, I think it's very helpful for us to, from now, every once in a while, to have a dialogue about, about what are the important issues from a county standpoint as it relates to policy that, that we could maybe suggest to the chamber that, to have the chamber support. That shouldn't just be Commissioner Mojo and I doing that. That should be an, an interaction of all of us. We bring in the ideas to the chamber of what we think are, are the positive aspects. And then in terms of, of, you know, when, when there are these trips made to the state legislature, there might, there might be a date and time when they do that, when one of the two of us might not be able to attend. And I think under those circumstances, there's nothing wrong with having another commissioner go in the place. You know, because that, that's just, I, I think that would make sense to do that, so.
Okay, so we're looking at putting Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Campbell on that committee?
Okay.
And I just noticed that Economic Development District, you're on, do you have an alternate? There's no alternate for that.
Yeah, that's, that's the one that's.
That's the Executive Committee, and then Frank is the member of the Board of Directors.
No, Paul.
Or Paul.
Yeah.
Frank, sorry.
So. So, Mr. Chair, so the, the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC has, has one member that is from the county, and that's Dave. And he also then serves on the Executive Committee of the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC. Commissioner Krabnoff is a, basically an appointment at-large by the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Authority to, that happens to represent Clay County. So he's, he's, he's not an alternate. He's an additional member of the, of the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Authority.
As an at-large member.
At, you still represent Clay County, but you're, according to their bylaws, you're an at-large member.
And I guess I was just looking at that committee, the one I'm referring, the Economic Development District, West Central, that you're on, Dave.
And I have not had any, since coming on board, I've not had any notification of when or what they meet or what the.
Well, that's the West Central.
I guess I'm trying to find.
I've got two question marks right there.
That's the West Central, uh, West Central Initiative, right?
Yeah, that, that, that committee only meets if there is a request made in our, in our region through the West Central, and we haven't, you're right, we have not met, that committee has not met.
Which gets to my point. We need to do a better job at the efforts of economic development within their region if Commissioner Ebinger has been on that board that takes into account applications for assistance of economic development in Clay County.
And it appears that there's been no applications.
Also, crazy.
I just wanted, if we need to make a change on that or an alternate, okay.
Well, I, you know, I, I don't think we need to make a change, but maybe, maybe that's something that, you know, and again, this is due to Commissioner Ebinger too, or Commissioner Ebinger, so maybe, you know, maybe he might want to reach out with West Central and, and, and see how we could better appoint or better promote, you know. If they don't meet unless there's applications, well, what are the, what's the application process and what are the benefits of applying?
I think, Steve, maybe you can double in with.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ebinger, making sure that anything related to that component, he's getting sent notifications on.
Yeah, so both Commissioner Ebinger and Commissioner Krabnoff have that, have that assignment.
And that's a, isn't that, isn't there also a loan fund that's operated through?
I think I'm on that.
You're on that one, yeah. And that one does, from time to time, meet, right?
Yeah, this last year, we didn't meet, I know, but I've met, it's mostly phone calls. Okay, any other changes we need? Not, well.
Do we need to?
Mr. Chair, I do have two items that specifically require the board's vote. The first one that we would have would be the Association of Minnesota Counties. We were looking to identify the policy committees, and while we just assigned our voting delegates for the December meeting, they also asked for it for the first year. There's generally nothing until we redo it again next November. But this identifies our board chairs and then our policy committee members, and also our voting delegates, which would be the five commissioners. This past December, November, we had myself, Matt Jacobson, our Planning and Zoning Director, and Justin Sora. and Justin Sora, our Highway Engineer, as the voting delegates. And so, the Association of Minnesota County requests that we have a vote, a Board Vote on these, on our assignments and our delegates.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we would appoint Commissioner Gross to the AMC General Government Committee, Commissioner Ebinger, who serves currently as Vice Chair to the AMC Policy Committee, myself as to the AMC Transportation, Commissioner Mojo to the AMC Environmental and Natural Resources, and Commissioner Kravenoff to the Health and Human Services Committee, as well as the eight voting delegates that Mr. Larson just previously mentioned, which are the five of us, himself, Matt Jacobson, and Justin Sora.
As a clarification, can we add the extension AMC to mine as well?
Yes.
And just clear-
Not add, but continue.
Yes, that can be part of my motion, that's another one, that's an appointment.
I'll second that motion.
Just a clarification on that, I'm on the Public Safety Commission.
Isn't that what I said?
Yes, all Public Policy.
Oh, okay, Public Safety.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Mojo, for any further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post, okay.
Mr. Chair, the second item that we have is a request from Lakeland Mental Health to consider Commissioner Mojo an extension of a three-year term on the Lakeland Mental Health Board.
I would so move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell, second by Commissioner Ebinger to extend Commissioner Mojo's appointment to Lakeland Mental Health. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, very good. Any else you need on that?
Then, if there's no further discussion, then I would just ask that the Board make a motion to approve the committee assignments for 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Again, a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Mojo to approve the committee assignments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us into committee reports. Andy, can you start us off this week?
I can. Just a second, pull up my calendar. This last week, I attended the Clay County Substance Use Crisis Center Construction Meeting yesterday. We did have a cost estimate review, a presentation by Gertz. There is, because of the addition of the B3 requirements to the construction, there will be a significant increase to the project. These numbers will be reported to this Board next week, I believe, at the Board, but just so the Board has an extra week to digest the fact that the B3 requirements, as imposed so far, are estimated to cost an additional $851,000 to the project. So, we are working on coordinating to see if there's any component that we can address in alternate ways. There, so the package for the Board meeting will include the estimate on the design delivery and the architectural renderings. Hopefully, we'll see a walkthrough. And did talk about submitting variances back to the B3 piece for the solar component, the daylight requirement, and retainage pond, hoping to receive variances on that, since this Board did just spend a substantial amount of money on the retainage pond for the transfer facility. Yesterday afternoon, I also attended the Owner-Architect Construction Meeting, and for the transfer station, we're really getting close to completion there. We did talk about finally getting the Xcel Energy gas line. I will hate to see what that total number is for the county overage in terms of budget because it took so long for Xcel to get that in. Just final design components that they are completing, making sure we have the ribbon cutting for the 31st on all of your committees' calendars. I'm not seeing it on the Board calendar yet, let's make sure we got that in. And then, we are still awaiting the technology, microphones in the conference room in that building, but we are hoping to have, or we will be having, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting at that new conference space, so that's exciting. And then, last night, I attended the Buffalo Red Watershed District Meeting, their first meeting of 2023. They did set the meeting schedule for the second Mondays of the month at 7:00. There was discussion about changing that to a different time. At this point, they will not be changing it. They did have Board elections. The Board President is Peter Fiested, Vice President Kathy Affield, Secretaries John Hanson and Treasurer Troy for the year. We did have the new appointment for Clay County, Bill Davis was present at that, and so the, as Commissioner Kravenoff knows, there's a lot of up-to-speed with acronyms and the like, but he was really excited to get to work. And did talk about the hearings for DCH 17 and 54 that they will put on the calendar going forward. So, I believe that concludes my reports.
Kevin?
Thank you. On Thursday, January 5th, we had the Intergovernmental Committee meeting, and most of the topic that happened there was regarding the schedule and the agenda for the retreat that's coming up on the 20th. It should be good, as you get that agenda, you might see that a couple of the major topics might have to be reversed based on the availability, when the speaker can make it. All of these speakers have, and there is going to be, it is going to be an emphasis on workforce and things associated to that. We're going to have, is it Shannon Foel and Derek LaPointe are going to be, two that are going to be on one of the panels. I think it's going to be really good. Later in the day, each entity is going to be allowed up to 10 minutes to give a presentation on positive things that have gone on in their communities. So, we look forward to that, and that, again, will be at the Law Enforcement Center, and Steve may want to add to that in his report. And on January 9th, my first meeting that day was the Substance Use Crisis Center Project, and Commissioner Mojo talked a little bit about that, that B3, you know, it did add about $851,000 to the project. And that's assuming that we get accepted on our three variances that we've asked for.
That's right.
And we've actually been told that if the one variance that deals with the daylight, if that variance isn't accepted, our whole plan goes out the window. We'd have to actually redesign the entire project. So, that's the significance and importance of that variance. I do also want to bring out that even though, you know, the number of $851,000 increased, the actual increase to the project, as we saw when we authorized it, is really up to more than like $1.25 million. And part of that, of course, goes to the fine-tuning of the soft costs, which a lot of it have to do with furnitures and fixtures. You know, at one time, we were talking about numbers that were $300,000, and that number now is closer to $600,000. So, after having those conversations, I know Commissioner Mojo and I are going to be now looking at our complete funding mechanism that we had planned, and how we're going to pay for all this stuff. When you add $1.25 million to it, we've got to go back to the drawing table a little bit and figure out how we're going to be able to make this all work. So that when we go to, assuming then that those variances are granted and all these things come through with the current proposed numbers that we're going to, you'll see the next week for the first time, but I think our bid letting is scheduled for, is it March timeframe?
Our bid announcements actually are in February.
Yeah, but by the time we'd actually award the bids, we're looking-
Yes, March, end of March.
And obviously, before we award bids, we're going to have to know how we're going to pay for it. And so, we've got some work to do in terms of, ultimately, our goal is we don't want to have to see this end up on a levy. And so, we've got, you know, we've got our work cut out for us, but I think we can, I think we'll be able to come up with some solutions to that problem.
Can you just, just real quick, just mention what a few of the B3 items would be? And then, the other question I would have is, there's more cost to it, but there's a reason for it, and that they want these in there. And there must be some efficiencies also that come through that hopefully would be efficiencies of cost of operation?
Yeah, and Commissioner Kravenoff, you'll get a little bit more of an idea of a breakdown of that $851,000 next week, but just to show you, geothermal wells, you know, that's $200,000. But ultimately, there might be some benefits to the long-term, you know, by investing that in that geothermal, there might be some, the additional HVAC work that needs to be done, $220,000. I don't know if that's going to result in any net savings to us down the road. Additional electrical requirements listed, $175,000, all based on, you know, what they require with B3. So, this $5 million that we got in this grant for this project, $850,000 of it goes just to pay for these B3.
The other component, too, if I might, the, there are some requirements in terms of plantings outside, and that certainly makes sense. There's some pollinator habitat component that will be part of it, the retainage pond for, you know, dealing with the water, but, you know, the county has already put a large retaining pond in there, so at some point, it becomes a duplication of services, doesn't really make sense. And two, having a solar component to the facility and/or a wind tower component to the facility. I think what we're trying to say is, we're okay implementing some sort of environmentally-friendly component. Does it make sense to have every single one of them if you can prove that putting more into one facility is helpful? Similar to the conversation we had when we built the jail, we took it upon ourselves to purchase that full array of solar panels, which coincidentally is located right next to this facility as well. So, there's components to it, like I said, that we're trying to figure out, but at some point, you question, does making sure that you have, it comes down to the material in the furniture that you're putting into the facility?
Yeah, you know, in these numbers, these numbers, you know, it, when you think of all these different additions that we just talked about, there's the price to install all those, but then there's also the extra 11% that gets tacked on top, both that brings in your architectural fees to bring it into the concept, and also then the construction manager who has to manage all of it. They have, they don't do all that for free, you know, so it all adds up, and unfortunately, you know, those are requirements that, you know, as we started this process, we didn't realize that those issues existed, you know, but anyway, you'll get a presentation, and I think what you'll see in that presentation, you'll actually get your first look at a 3D rendering of the facility. I think you'll find that pretty interesting as well. You'll actually get to see how this thing is scheduled to look inside moving forward, so you should be able to look forward to that next week. And then, also, that afternoon, we did have our owners' meeting, a construction meeting for the Resource Recovery Facility, as Commissioner Mojo mentioned. The biggest issue on that, the biggest thing, was the gas is finally hooked up. I think we're really going to be in for another shocker when we see during these cold months, when we had to fill all those propane tanks on a temporary basis to heat that facility for the lack of having that gas meter installed. It's not going to be a friendly number to us. Other than that, I think we're on schedule for the 31st, is it 1:30?
1:30 for the media, 2:30 for-
For the public?
Short ceremony, yep, and then tours after that.
Tours after that, okay. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Want to talk about the highway tracking?
Oh, yes, I do. You know what, I'm going to defer that to you because I don't have my notes with, that was last Tuesday, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I think the one area that, you know, we continue to talk about is the projects that are going to be related to the diversion.
Yes.
And, you know, I know there's going to be some road closures and some additional work being done, there's going to be some work along our county line road, and I know that I've asked for Commissioner Mojo that you be really informed on all of these issues as it relates to those proposals moving forward, because we're ultimately going to be asked to sign an MOU as a county on these projects, so.
Justin had forwarded that-
Great.
...document.
Okay. And then, I don't have that rest of the document, but thank you for reminding me of that, of that, any report.
Mr. Chair, Wednesday, the 5th, virtually attended the State Emergency Communication Board Legislative and Governmental Affairs Committee meeting. We elected a new Vice Chair, Marshall Ward. We had discussion on the Public Safety Telecommunicator Training and Certification legislation. This would offer training opportunities and certification standards for dispatch center employees, dispatchers, and call-takers. Language is being worked on. Hopefully, we will have that ready to present in March. Also, openings on the committee itself, Northwest ECB, I'm one of the two representatives there. We are fully staffed, and we attend these meetings. There's some glaring gaps in some regions. There was discussion on how to try and get them engaged and showing up. And also, the Chief Association and the Sheriff's Association have yet to provide representatives on this, and the statutory language has positions for them, so we're going to reach out to them. Later that day, I virtually attended a joint session of the Public Safety and Public Health and Human Services Policy Committees. Matt Freeman from the Public Health and Human Services presented an extensive overview on some of the AMC policy concerns for 2023. A lot of it is things that we were already aware of and had looked at last year, but nothing got passed. We had a long discussion about the difficult position the counties are put in on paying for some of the maintaining people who don't meet medical criteria. Counties pay for 100% of the care, and they have no power to move these individuals to appropriate care, particularly state, specifically some of the state facilities, but we end up paying the bill for where they are at. We want to add in mentally ill and dangerous to the same classification as you have for psychosexual and dangerous individuals, to where the state assumes some of the responsibility and the cost. Often, it's a six-to-nine-month process to get a commitment with some of these folks. We discussed last year's- We discussed last year's how, Bill HF 3439, the modified sum of the county costs for the care. We kind of get in the weeds on this. I don't want to get too wonky about it here, but I think the bottom line is $1,600 to $2,400 a day for some of the state facilities that are involved in this. There's also challenges to delay of exit. There needs to be criteria and opportunity for people to be exited out of the system, particularly when the counties are still paying for it. And there's been some progress with the individuals. We had a long discussion on juvenile placement, which is something I think we're all aware of. They're trying to set up a youth systems mapping connection. It connects the Department of Corrections to where you can track where your needs are, individuals who have a need, and facilities that have openings statewide. So if you have an individual, a juvenile who needs specific treatment, you can see what's, what's available throughout the state without having to call each facility. The availability is, is on a central site that, that can be viewed and possibly expedite getting these kids into treatment. And again, we discussed the jail problems. They're widespread because there are no facilities. We're looking at 50 new commitments a year simply for the mentally ill and dangerous classification, where there are no facilities available to put these folks post-commitment. So I think it was, it gave us a great view of the groundwork, didn't come up with a whole lot of answers, and that's going to be something we all work on. I think for the people of public health, it was a, a good opportunity to hear some of the concerns from public safety about where we overlap on, on these issues. And it's going to be work in progress. That completes my report.
Paul? What's your? The first one is, I, on January 5th, which, last Thursday, I joined Commissioner Campbell at the Intergovernmental Group, and again, he already reported on that, and looking forward to the retreat on Friday. The other, the meeting also I had later in that day, on the 5th, was the Local Advisory Council for Children's Mental Health. The main discussion there, they're putting, this may be have been previously reported, but working on a survey, two surveys, one working toward the parents and caregivers and another survey toward providers. And what it will do, the survey is a broad reach, going out to professionals, school districts, parents of children and others, to find out, to see if there's any potential gaps in their delivery systems and finding out what needs are falling short. Example, that could be transportation in working with, getting the people to the places they need to be. Anyway, that's just one example. Survey results will pretty well be, the distribution's starting to go out now. The survey results should be back sometime in April. They'll bring those all together and then expect on our agenda in May that, that there will be a report to the board of the survey results, and, and that coincides with mental health month in the month of May. That's what I have.
Okay. Last Tuesday, I attended the Highway Tracking Committee meeting, and Commissioner Campbell covered some of that on the, the Division Authority wanted the MOU signed for re-abreastment agreement, and we felt that we're not quite ready for that yet. We want to meet again and scheduled to discuss some road vacating and how that's all going to be taken care of. So we're going to have another meeting on that before we'll sign the MOU on that. Linden Turn Lane Project, right there on Highway 10, that has been approved and they'll be done this summer while school is out. There's construction going to be going on in CASA 18, CASA 26, and CASA 34. They're talking about doing a full depth, what they call asphalt pavement, and they found out that's not performing as well as they thought, so, and CASA 26 and 34 were planned for this type of highway construction, and so they're going to relook that, that project, those projects. 11th Street Underpass, what to do with the contamination material, which is oil-based or whatever. As far as some of the funds that are available, I think the cost of that project's probably going up daily, probably, or whatever, but I think we're committed for about $2 million to that, to that project.
2.5, I think.
2.5?
1.5.
1.5? New shop constructions, the cold storage out at the Highway Department is just about completed. Plumbing inspection's going on, Comstock, that was done last week, so that's just about to be done there. And also, plumbing inspection at Georgetown's going to happen this month sometime. The Holly Safe Routes of School Projects, they have some discrepancies as far as cost. That was submitted by the contractor, so they're working those discrepancies out. Yesterday, I attended the MRC meeting by noon. Big discussion on solid waste. There's nine counties going together, Northern County and surrounding counties that are going together with their project, and they're having a problem what to do with the leach aid, I guess, so, I don't know, we can probably give them a few pointers on that. I, I don't know if they're using it for the same thing that we are using it for, but evidently they got a problem getting rid of the leach aid. Capitol Hill Association, which is the new lobbyist for the MRC, Bredda Tolleson represented them, and she talked about Drainage Work Group, and people that attended the meeting were concerned about, there's too many state agencies as far as this drainage group. They complained, there's no action by them, it takes 10 years to get a permit approved. They feel there's too many people working from home, so there've been, there's disappointment on the, on the Drainage Group. Four priorities that they decided to work on is here at the County Programming, Transportation Funding. On the funding there, they're talking about the electric vehicle, batteries, cycling, and they feel the manufacturers are working on that to get that settled. Royal Band, Royal Broadband, I think they got a plan for the next four years. I think it's over a billion dollars. Hopefully, getting more broadband adopted. And then the Drainage Authority is the other one they're working on. That's my report.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, go ahead.
Can I just, thank you for bringing up on that Highway Tracking meeting about that, meeting about that contaminated soil issue. That's something that I think there's been a request from, they're looking for a, a place to basically deal with that, and of course, our landfill has been, always been an option. We do have some concerns about what those quantities would be. We only have so, so much room within our landfill at any given time for contaminated material, contaminated soil. So we're going to, we've asked for more information on what they anticipate to be. We'll have to work with, with Cory and understand what's within our permit. We also are, are always requested to deal with contaminated soil when it comes to other building projects that go on in, in the Clay County area. There's going to, there's other places besides that particular spot that runs into contaminated soil, and they always need a place to, to bring that. And so we need to make sure that we let them know to what level of capacity we're going to be able to handle there, so that there's, they can, they can look to other resources for what we can't, can't handle. Of course, it brings a revenue to, to us as well, but at the same point in time, our permit only allows us to have so much of that. I, so I just wanted to bring the board up to date on, on what some of those discussions are. And then I, I did want to, going back to the Resource Recovery, I did want to give a thank you to Cory Bang and to Joe Olson. They put together a list of, of all of the property insurance needs that we're going to have to submit to MCIT. They spent some time working on that, and, and I think we're going to be ready to have a policy in place, I think they said, was it by January 31st? That we will now then, the contractor's responsibility will go away for insurance, and it will become our responsibility to cover it. And that's no easy task, putting all that together. So I just wanted to give a shout out to those two for their work on that. Thank you.
I like, Mr. Chair. I participated last Tuesday in the Highway Tracking meeting. That's been covered. I would just, just note that as part of 11th Street Underpass, we did discuss a, a grant application that had put it in, put in place for $1.2 million. And assuming that the state of Minnesota does allocate the money, they did receive that grant. So, so again, there's some additional significant costs to that project, but 1.2 million was, was approved. I had Department Head Evaluation on the 4th. Also met with, with Darren and Josh Hagam, our labor attorney, in regards to our three ongoing labor issues. We have three departments that have not settled yet for 2023. Met with Joe Olson that afternoon on a series of project, projects here at the county. We've also continued on with the ribbon cutting, ribbon cutting program planning with Cory and, and also with Jackie. Participated in the Intergovernmental Meeting that's been addressed. Also, just had a conversation with Roars in regards to just any, if there are any additional updates that, that the board received earlier or at the end of last year in regards to the Moritz Center Mall area. And also just talked a little bit about our lease at the DMV. That first three-year lease is coming up at the end of, end of November, and so we do have a two-year extension on that, so that'll be something we'll have to discuss. And the future issues, we've struggled a little bit with our UKG payroll that, that we, that started last year. Darren and Anna have been rock stars in problem solving the different issues that we had. We're hopeful that, based on some of the work that they did of manually inputting some salary adjustments that should have just shifted over, everybody will hopefully have a successful payroll this, this Friday. I participated in the Substance Use Meeting that's been well, well-covered, and also yesterday, the Resource Recovery Facility. In addition to Commissioner Mojo's comments about citing a meeting for, for the commissioners to attend, Sheriff Amptin is also going to be having a ceremony, ceremony of installation, Chris Martin to be the next chief deputy with, with Steve Lansum's retirement. There's all, also going to be some other recognitions from his officers that day, and so I will post that. So if the board wishes to participate in that meeting, the figures will take about a half hour, 45 minutes, I would allow time to participate there and then also go to the Resource Recovery Facility. Just a quick reminder, I think you all would have received your campaign Finance Board Recertification Letter at the end of December, and so in the event that, that you have the end of January to complete that. So just a reminder. Also, just for our, the public, this, this week, it doesn't look a whole lot different, but we moved to our board packets, to our, to our new system. And so we're, internally, we're still working out a few different issues, but I think from the public standpoint, the full packet is now available, it's just not the, the front page. And so for those interested, there's additional information there. And just a reminder again to our public that we will be closed next Monday in recognition of Martin Luther King Day. That concludes our report.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think it's probably wise to advertise the appointment of the new chief deputy on the agenda.
Yeah.
Calendar.
Melton, you have anything?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just want to thank you for your past service and continued expertise through this council here. Thank you. Jackie, you have anything to let us know about? Very good. We're adjourned.